Welcome, everyone. Vice Mayor and council members, I call this regular meeting of the Albany City Council for September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. If I can ask Councilmember Hanson Romero to read the land acknowledgement statement?
The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of Lejeune. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Alone tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson Romero. I ask City Clerk, can you call roll, please?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Mickey?
Here. There were no closed sessions today, so there's nothing to report. I will move on to item number four, ceremonial matters. Item four dash one, proclamation, National Hispanic Latin Heritage Month. Vice Mayor Lopez.
In recognition of National Hispanic Latin Heritage Month, September fifteenth to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, whereas Hispanic Heritage Month provides an opportunity to acknowledge the diverse population of Albany rooted in ancestry from Spanish-speaking nations and recognize the contribution to our city. And whereas the observation started in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period, starting on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth. And whereas the terms Hispanic, Latino, Latina, Chicano, Chicana, Latin, and Latinx, among others, are diverse as the ingredients we put in our pots, and each identifying term may mean something different to each person. And whereas the term Hispanic is an attempt to be inclusive of people of varying origins, where the Spanish language is primarily spoken, it falls short in accounting for those with shared experiences, culture, and traditions whose roots originate from non-Spanish-speaking countries, communities, and mixed indigenous experiences. And whereas the terms Latino and Latina include a diverse group of people with roots throughout Latin America and beyond, and with a heritage connected to the original indigenous communities of Latin America and Africa prior to colonization. And whereas many diverse individuals of Latin descent and mixed indigenous roots in Albany make incalculable contributions to our neighborhoods, communities, and sectors of the economy, and we are a greater and more vibrant place because of them. And whereas the City of Albany, and whereas in the City of Albany, people of Latin descent and mixed indigenous roots make up over twelve percent of the population, and the city looks forward to increased collaboration with our diverse community at home and abroad. And whereas the Hispanic Heritage Month, two thousand and twenty-four, theme, pioneers a change shaping the future together, recognizes the significant achievement of the Hispanic-Latin community in the economic and political industries. And whereas the celebration also acknowledges the importance, though often untold, roles and achievements of Hispanic-Latin Americans have played in our history, identity, culture, economy, literature, invention, sports, science, medicine, and politics. And whereas educators and advocates alike with resonating identities are powerful examples of academic achievement, cultural pride, and self-knowledge, and a commitment to our youth future and educational equity. And whereas accomplishments in Albany's local elected offices and appointment to city advisory bodies demonstrate the effectiveness of representation of such identities. And whereas Latin-owned businesses and vendors such as Brezo's, Five Tacos and Beers, Casa Oaxaca, and Equilibrium Construction, among others, contribute greatly to the city's economic development and diversity. And whereas the City of Albany would like to acknowledge and recognize the Familias Latinas de Albany, parent group, for their ongoing work to support, promote, and celebrate the interest of Hispanic-Latin students and families in Albany. And whereas the City of Albany would like to also acknowledge and recognize the efforts of local youth in Albany at Albany Middle School and Albany High School, with a particular emphasis of recognition tonight for Albany High's Connection Latina Club. And whereas Connection Latina's membership not only provides visibility of diverse identities, but also ensures sustained campus community engagement amongst peers, which speak deeply to this year's Hispanic Heritage Month theme of shaping the future. And whereas though proclamations are simply words of acknowledgement, we as a city are committed to collaborative effort to support our community members, especially youth, who truly do shape the future of our city and society at large. Now therefore, the Albany City Council does hereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Hispanic-Latinx Heritage Month in the City of Albany. We acknowledge the contribution of Hispanic and Latinx people in our community and recognize that our journey to a fully inclusive society is not yet over. And I would like to bring to the podium representatives from Connection Latina, who will be receiving the proclamation.
I am Anthony Saba, and I am club president for Connection Latina at Albany High School. As a club, we strive to build community and connect to our roots. Some things we do as a club are fundraisers to fund Latino graduation at the end of the year, and we hold weekly meetings to get to know each other better, learn about each other's backgrounds, and sometimes play games like Loteria, and to build better connections. We also work closely with Familias Latinas de Albany, which is a small group, to promote their events, which also help us get to know the families in the community. If you would like to support Connection Latina, you can follow us on Instagram at AHS underscore Connection Latina to keep up with our events. And if you would like to make a donation, you can donate by using Vemo to Aisha Rodriguez, the club representative. So please make sure, if you can, to label it as Connection Latina, so we can properly account for the donations. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm vice president of Connection Latina. I would like to say a few words about this club, because it's very dear to me. Going over your four years of high school, it is very important to find out who you are and what you believe in and what you are striving for. As a member of Connection Latina, I've learned so much about my culture. I've keyed in with other people's culture. I've learned about how other people communicate their culture in different ways, and I feel like this club is a really important thing for so many people in the high school. I also believe that this club guides so many people, and it helps with striving to finish high school throughout our four years, having that community that you can go to and, in the end, that we support with our funding for Connection Latina graduation that we end off the year with. That's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leila Martinez Douglas. I'm a club member of Connection Latina. I've been at the Latino clubs in Albany since I was sixth, seventh grade, and it's really helped me build a sense of community in Albany, make me feel like I belong here. And being able to work closely with my dad and other people and Familias Latinas, it's really helped me get to know my community better and just trying to strive to make us, us as in Latinos, in Albany have a sense of belonging here and that there's more, there's more diversity here and that we don't feel like there's, like we aren't alone, that we will always have a place here, no matter what, and we have people like them to help us strive to do better for our community. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any council comments?
I just have a quick comment on top of what was spoken during the proclamation. One, just want to acknowledge, today also happened to be a celebration of Mexico Independent Day, which comes with some nuances. And I just want to, I point that out, because I want to acknowledge, as we're celebrating and acknowledging Latin Hispanic Heritage Month, that it's also important to recognize that it's more than just Mexicans. And I say that because I grew up in a community in Richmond where there's, it was a melting pot of many folks from different backgrounds throughout Latin America, and I don't think people understand how offensive it is to refer to someone as a Mexican who is not. You're making this assumption, because we all look the same. And I would like to point that out, that when someone said they're Latino or Latina, does not mean automatically that they're Mexican. But everyone is invited to the carne asada when we're celebrating Mexico Independent Day, that's for, that's for sure. But also, I just want to end it on this note, I know the proclamation alluded much to indigenous ancestry and our role in that capacity, and I just want to acknowledge, too, that Mexico's independence cannot be celebrated without the work and the power and the efforts of many indigenous communities throughout what is now called Mexico. When Mexico broke away from the colonial terror that was striking, complete destruction in our culture and our social fabric of our ancestors, it was indigenous communities that helped us see that through. And I wear my colotique collar with pride tonight. Colotique, the goddess of earth, and someone to be rightfully feared for good reasons. But I'm just, I'm very honored, and I know, you know, coming from a very biased space, but I'm very honored to see young people that look like me stepping up into leadership roles and leading. Seeing young people, the three of you, I don't think you hear it enough, but like during Club Rush, I'm sure you just think, oh, we're just trying to recruit and indoctrinate the next batch of people to take on the leadership roles. But you're, you're reaching out to people like my daughter, who's just starting her time at Albany High, and that's important. When you're sharing your knowledge to the, to the next generation at your high school, that's kind of what we're seeing as a, as a whole in our community, through anyone who comes from that Latin diaspora. So I appreciate the three of you for being brave, for speaking today. I know it's not the most easy thing, speaking in front of that microphone. You're probably all going to feel awkward later, when you look at the recording, and see that the camera was dead on your face. Good, good, good content for TikTok before it gets banned. But thank you, thank you all for showing up. I don't know if other council members had comments.
I don't recommend looking, personally, unless you want a career in being in public speaking, which I guess I sort of ended up in somehow, as a shy person. I think she's probably very angry with us for what we're doing to the planet, rightly so. Thank you so much for connecting and building what's called civic capital in our city. That is often viewed as a crisis in our society, that we don't have enough connections, and so thank you for connecting with each other and having your richness come forward in our, in our city. Thank you.
I'll just echo my thanks for all you'd be here and all the work you're doing at the club. I know that's a lot of work, so I appreciate you all doing it and being here to speak to us about it. We really appreciate it.
As a fellow introvert, that's something I share with Councilmember Jordan, I will tell you that you, all three of you did a wonderful and really wonderful job presenting tonight, and, you know, think of this as your first step in public speaking and taking on leadership roles. I will share something that Vice Mayor Lopez said. I don't think many people know, but my family, my parents were actually born in Peru, so they're Peruanos. And it is truly a melting pot when one looks at South America and Latin America, and I think it's really important that we remember that, like the US, so much of the Americas is a melting pot, and so much of what we owe as nations and as people, we have to remember both those that came before us, those that were already here, and make sure that we pay our dues. Thank you for coming tonight, and good luck with high school. With that, we'll move on to item, oh, sorry, public comment, sorry.
Hey, everyone. My name is Randolph. I work with many groups, including Familias Latinas de Albany and Connection Latina. So I just want to say thank you for the proclamation, proclamation, wow, talk about public speaking, huh? I just want to bring to your attention that although the popular term Latinx, Latina is circulating within Albany, the great majority of our population, the Bay Area, California in the US, still identify as Latinos. I just want to say I kindly ask that our Latino identity continues to be included in the celebration this month. We too wish to feel welcome here in Albany. One last thing, to my Latinos, Latinx, and Latin, Latina, let's continue to work together, celebrate each other, and inspire the younger generation, because after all, they're going to be the ones taking the mantle. And we have good example of city council members that supports them and know the value that they have and possess in, in their contribution to our society. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? Is there a public comment on Hispanic and Latin Heritage Month? Do we have any comments online? City Clerk? No online, okay.
Is this a comment on the proclamation?
No, mine is a public comment.
Okay.
Okay. So we're on item four dash two, so we'll move on, sorry, we were on four dash one. We'll move on to four dash two, proclamation, Albany Strollers and Rollers Day. Councilmember Tiedemann? Thank you.
Proclamation, in recognition of Albany Strollers and Rollers Day, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas the City of Albany strives to curate safe and accessible pathways for pedestrians and cyclists as alternative transportation options, and whereas in the year two thousand and four, a dedicated group of community members came together to advocate for such safe pathways, forming the Albany Strollers and Rollers. And whereas the Albany Strollers and Rollers have served as a model community organization under the fiscal sponsorship of Bike East Bay to enhance public awareness and safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and other users seeking clean mobility options. And whereas Albany Strollers and Rollers have leveraged their resources and social capital to interface with the public to achieve significant gains to sustain Albany's sense of walkability and dedicated cycling lanes. And whereas the presence of enhanced bike storage options are the direct result of advocacy efforts leveraged by Albany Strollers and Rollers in the spirit of community service. And whereas a shared sense of responsibility against the climate crisis has resulted in the Albany Strollers and Rollers to support alternative transportation options to major events in Albany, such as the Solano Stroll via active engagement and hosting of a free bike parking valet. And whereas the coupling of shared responsibility against the climate crisis and leveraging social capital has resulted in Albany Strollers and Rollers showcasing stellar advocacy for cycling organizations in nearby minoritized and socially economically burdened communities to feel empowered to demand catalyst, catalytic change. And whereas the Albany Strollers and Rollers now embark upon their twentieth anniversary of community advocacy, climate justice, and transportation equity. And whereas the City of Albany and its community members have benefited in various ways over the last twenty years due to the many volunteer hours of individuals within the Albany Strollers and Rollers Membership Collective. And whereas the social landscape and perception of safe pedestrian access and cycling as a mode of transportation to work or school among Albany residents can be attributed to the invaluable time and efforts made by the Albany Strollers and Rollers to raise and sustain awareness on the impacts of reducing our carbon footprint. And whereas such social landscapes and perceptions have enabled families, especially youth in Albany, to feel both safe and a sense of pride in enjoying our sidewalks and streets when commuting to school, work, or for leisure endeavors in our beautiful local parks and business districts. Now therefore, the Albany City Council does hereby proclaim September twenty-ninth as Albany Strollers and Rollers Day. We acknowledge the contributions of our local community members embedded within the organization who seek to hold our region accountable for pedestrian and cycling transportation access and safety.
Thank you, Mayor Mickey, and City Council, and staff, for recognizing our twenty years of stroll, of our service to our community and declaring Sunday, September twenty-ninth, Albany Strollers and Rollers Day. When I first discovered and joined ASNR in two thousand and five, it didn't make the very beginning, I had maybe thirty members, and we were working with the city on creating an underpass, so people didn't have to cross a freeway on-ramp to access the waterfront or waterfront by foot and bike. Well, now we comprise almost eight hundred member households. It shows how Albany's really become an active transportation hub, and people are becoming less dependent on cars to combat the climate crisis and enhance their health. Over the years, we have so many products, so many projects that we're proud of. The underpass, the Buchanan Street multi-use path, bike lanes on Marin and Buchanan, lights on the Alone Greenway, a wider and safer greenway, sidewalk maintenance and safety, providing bicycle valet parking at events like the Arts and Green Festival and Solano Stroll, which we've now passed on to the high school mountain bike team. We've partnered on two AC Transit Parklets. We've installed more than one thousand free bike lights on Albany student bikes, which Ann was a part of at Ocean View every year. That's just a sampling. We've managed and funded bike racks in the parks, at the waterfront, at our schools, at the library, often securing grants to help pay for them. And since two thousand and twelve, we've partnered with local businesses to secure, to sponsor and fund seventy-four bike, bike racks in our business district, which have become so iconic in Albany that they're even featured on the mural on the east wall of Trader Joe's. Have you guys noticed that? You walk in Trader Joe's right on the right, the big mural, there's a bike, bike rack there. So we've made it. When ASNR was founded twenty years ago, e-bikes were an anomaly. Maybe someone would carry rig their own bike, but now they've completely changed our world. Look on Solano Avenue, the Greenway, every day, you'll see parents toting kids on the back and groceries, loads of groceries, taking kids to school, groceries, and seniors like my partner, who can ride places and distances he really wouldn't have dreamed of a couple of years ago. So it's really, personally, it's been a pleasure and an honor to work together with city staff, with you all, and past city staff, and your appointed bodies, to make Albany safer for people who want to stroll and roll, whatever that, their specific mode is, and allows us to reduce our carbon footprint. I represent the past and the present of Albany Strollers and Rollers. As I get older and grayer, which is happening moment by moment, I'm really grateful to look next to me and see Astraea Seinberg, who with other younger ASNR members, will continue to work to truly make Albany a place in which people of all ages and abilities can feel safe and comfortable strolling and rolling wherever they want to go. Astraea represents our future and will help lead Albany there sustainably, sustainably. Astraea?
Good evening, City Council members and the community of Albany. Thank you for this recognition, and I think it's safe to say that the future, we saw a glimpse of the future this evening, also with the group that you recognize, the Albany High School Connection Latina, I believe it was called, and so certainly happy Hispanic Heritage Month, and identify as Latina as well, and so this was a really meaningful meeting for more than one reason. So back to this proclamation that we're celebrating tonight as well, the Albany Strollers and Rollers. I can certainly attest to the hard work of the Strollers and Rollers, having joined and been active in the group for almost a year now. I've observed the group to be attentive and responsive to community needs. These are qualities that are paramount in a community organization, and that recognition is well-deserved and motivating for the twenty years ahead. As Amy pointed out, the future of Albany and many Bay Area communities is less car-dependent. This is very true. Our young generations are highly in tune with environmental justice issues and climate change, and seek to walk the talk more than ever before, and I'd like to say I'm a part of that. So we know the economic, environmental, and health consequences of vehicle, of vehicle-dependent society. Opportunities for greater connectivity in the communities around us, such as To and From Bart, is advancing, that's moving forward along San Pablo and neighboring cities. So as a city, we have the opportunity to act today for the future that we know is already on the horizon. Opportunities for safe and active movement help address multiple community goals, from equitable public health, quality of life, and environmental quality. And we, Albany Strollers and Rollers, are committed to continuing to listen to the future stewards, such as the high schoolers and the youth, and those that are elderly and most vulnerable right now. We will work collectively to serve public needs in ways that we are able to, and work with city government and other stakeholders to bring about safe routes and better facilities for cyclists and pedestrians. Thank you for this recognition, and I hope that on September twenty-ninth, you too will just remember this, this moment that we had tonight and celebrate. Thank you. Good evening, City Council.
Thank you. Any council comments?
economic, environmental, and health consequences of vehicle-dependent society. Opportunities for greater connectivity in the communities around us, such as To and From BART, is advancing. That's moving forward along San Pablo and neighboring cities. So, as a city, we have the opportunity to act today for the future that we know is already on the horizon. Opportunities for safe and active movement help address multiple community goals from equitable public health, quality of life, and environmental quality. And we, Albany Strollers and Rollers, are committed to continuing to listen to the future stewards, such as the high schoolers and the youth, and those that are elderly and most vulnerable right now. We will work collectively to serve public needs in the ways that we are able to, and work with city government and other stakeholders to bring about safe routes and better facilities for bicyclists and pedestrians. Thank you for this recognition, and I hope that on September 29th, you too will just remember this moment that we had tonight and celebrate. So, thank you. Good evening, City Council.
Thank you. Any council comments?
I guess because I'm understandably associated with the group, I will just offer, this was in, I'm grateful to other council members, and I think maybe the Vice Mayor was the champion of this. I had no involvement with it, but I'm very grateful for the recognition for the group. And I thank the volunteers in the group for thousands of hours of volunteer work on behalf of the city and tens of thousands of dollars of money raised and spent to improve the city. Thank you.
And as noted in the proclamation, I just want to, you know, highlight explicitly that the work done by Strollers and Rollers is not just limited to the boundary of what, one point, a quarter square mile of landmass. But we, before I moved to Albany, I was aware of the group because folks would come out to Richmond and join for the ride that we had when I was living out there. And that's how I became aware of the group. And it was members from the Albany Rollers and Strollers group that had made us feel a lot more safer. Several months back, I had mentioned about the Richmond Bridge Path and how we were stopped by the cops. And then, a week or so later, we had folks from Gridley Peak Cycling Team, from Albany Rollers and Strollers, other collective from Bike East Bay that all showed up for us. And that meant a lot to us, to know that other communities who are just as interested in bicycles as we are, understand and acknowledge that it's the same collective energy. And so, I just want to acknowledge that explicitly, that Albany Rollers and Strollers have stood up and have fought these fights for, I don't want to say the smaller people, but for the people whose voices aren't as heard and don't get, aren't afforded the same type of platform. So, from a very personal standpoint, I really appreciate what Albany Rollers and Strollers had done to uplift my home community and other communities nearby, not just limiting to what we've been able to accomplish here in the City of Albany. And I look forward to many more productive decades of work now that we're seeing the future build itself out.
I'll just add a few words. I came to Albany in 2005, and I have truly appreciated all the work that both the City Council, staff, and Albany Strollers and Rollers has done in terms of making our community really a safer place for all of our, everyone from our kids to our oldest people, be able to get around safely without having to use a vehicle. And that's quite an impressive thing. I think the other thing I would note, as Vice Mayor Lopez said, Strollers and Rollers really, the Albany Strollers and Rollers really had a bigger impact in the East Bay, whether it's El Cerrito, Richmond, Berkeley. Amy mentioned, you know, passing the baton on to the next generation, and one can look to Berkeley. And Berkeley was the leader in bicycle infrastructure. And then, there was a very long, quiet period in Berkeley. And actually, I think part of what reinvigorated them was both the work of East Bay Coalition and Albany Rollers and Strollers, really energizing the next generation to make change. And so, I'm really excited to see Estrella, you taking on some of the leadership in the group and really leading the next generation to make sure that we continue to build on the work that's been done, and that we don't allow there to be a large gap like there was, I think, in Berkeley in terms of making sure we're focused on pedestrians and Strollers and Rollers. So, thank you.
Any public comments in the room? Not seeing any in the room, any online?
Good evening, City Council. This is Nick Phillips, co-founder of Albany Strollers and Rollers. And I'm very sorry I'm not there in person. The election season and my work schedule are conspiring to take up all my time. I want to express my thanks to the City Manager and to all the City Council members for bringing this forward, and to those who authored it, and to those who just spoke. And I am grateful to Amy and Estrella for being there to receive it and their wonderful statements, and of course, for their work as well. I feel humbled and honored by this proclamation and excited, and I, excuse me, am excited for our upcoming 20th anniversary celebration. As part of that celebration, I've been looking back and identifying milestones and accomplishments of the organization, and it's made me so proud to have been a part of this journey. And most importantly of all, so grateful for all who have contributed. And there have been many, many who have put in so much time and energy and effort. So, thank you again, City Council, and all that have contributed to this community organization, and to all the community organizations whose work make Albany an awesome place to live. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comments. With that, we'll move on to item four dash three, proclamation, City of Albany, 116th Anniversary of Incorporation. Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Since we don't have anyone accepting this tonight, I'm just going to sit right.
Thank you. I thought I'd been forgotten. I appreciate. I just want to thank Albany Strollers and Rollers. This is Lucinda Yai. I want to thank Albany Strollers and Rollers and the Council for recognizing the important work of this organization and for its important service to our community. I know over the years, they have faced many hurdles, and I really appreciate their persistence. I am a resident whose primary form of transportation is bicycling, and that would not be possible without this organization. I appreciate their advocacy to create a safer environment for me to bicycle. And if it wasn't for Albany Strollers and Rollers, I would be driving a lot more than I have to, and I would be adding to our traffic problems in our city and our climate problems. So, thank you, Albany Strollers and Rollers. Thank you, City Council, for recognizing their important work and to our community, and also in supporting our Climate Action Adaptation Plan.
Thank you for your comments. Again, apologies for missing that you had raised your hand. Councilmember Hanson Romero.
So, this proclamation, celebrating the City of Albany's 116th Anniversary of Incorporation. Whereas the City of Albany was incorporated on September 22nd, 1908, and whereas Albany today is a family-friendly and vibrant city that is economically and culturally diverse, with walkable neighborhoods and thriving businesses, outstanding schools, and an active community. And whereas groups of Alone people are the first known people who lived in the area, including at the base of Albany Hill along Cerrito Creek. And whereas the Albany City Council has adopted a land acknowledgement to recognize the city's first-known residence that is read at the beginning of each public meeting as follows. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of Lejeune. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Alone tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community, and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. And whereas in 1908, area residents protested the dumping of Berkeley garbage in their community by incorporating and became the City of Ocean View. And whereas in 1909, the name of the city was changed to Albany in honor of the birthplace of the city's first mayor, Mayor Frank Roberts. And whereas in 1927, Albany voters adopted the city's first charter, giving full control over its own governance. And whereas the City of Albany is a sanctuary city committed to protecting the rights of all people in our community. And whereas the Albany City Council has adopted a mission statement that reads, Albany is committed to providing a healthy, safe, and accessible city, and strives to lift every voice in our community. And whereas Albany remains a unique and welcoming place that celebrates all members of the community and includes one-of-a-kind businesses, inviting parks and open spaces, and fosters a strong sense of community and civic pride. And whereas September 22nd through 28th, 2024, marks the city's annual Albany Local Week to support and celebrate the amazing businesses, parks, attractions, and uniqueness of our city for one entire week. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council acknowledges all residents, businesses, visitors, community members, and staff for their contributions to our city, and encourages all to celebrate the City of Albany on its 116th Anniversary of Incorporation.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson Romero. Any council comments?
I'll just offer, I grew up in Los Angeles. The City of Los Angeles, I never imagined that I would live in a small city, and I never imagined that my voice would matter. So, I'm very grateful for all the people that did the work to found the city and create the city and make it what it is. Those people was Dario Manicetti. Then a week of moving here, he was handing me lettuce that he had grown in his driveway, because he'd converted his driveway to a garden. And within two months, I'd already met a City Council member who'd invited me to serve in city government, which I had no clue what I was doing, and I was terrible at it. But I said yes, and something led to another.
So, and I'm really excited about this. I'm like, oh, my gosh, we're already here at 116th year. I mean, wow. You know, growing up here, I'm so grateful to have been, you know, here all my life, basically. I'm fourth-generation Albany. My family, it was a real honor to have us featured in like the 100-year anniversary book. So, that was really cool. And I've just always been so happy to share our city with as many people as I possibly can. Also, being in real estate, it's always exciting for me to like welcome a new family here and be like, hey, guess what? Let me show you around. So, it's, it's just, it's a really special place. I lived somewhere else for a little while and thinking, you know, I remember being back in high school going, there's nothing to do in Albany. It's so boring. Oh, my God. And then, move away and realize, oh, my gosh, where is my community? I miss my little fishbowl. And I'm so happy to be raising my children here in Albany, and I'm just so very honored and excited that we're here. So.
Do we have any public comments in the room? Not seeing any public comments in the room. Any public comments online? Not seeing any public comments. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson Romero. We'll move on to item five, City Manager's Report. City Manager, may the council have your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge the prompt responsive work of our public safety departments, both police and fire, with regard to responding to a fire that occurred on Albany Hill on September 11th. On the morning of the 11th, the Albany Fire Department and Police Department led to the hill based on a call reporting a fire in the area of Madison and Adams Street. Remarkably, the fire was responded to and extinguished within 15 minutes. So, really the value of our local service here. And really just recognize the continued perseverance of protecting that open space area, and reiterate that across all departments in the city, we are continuing to look at ways to enhance how we further protect our open spaces, especially during fire season. As acknowledged in the proclamation, thank you, we have a hefty Albany Local Week. So, bear with me here, and we have some visuals to go along with this. Appreciate everyone that's put time in to creating events for our community. And I underscore "community" because a lot of these uniquely are not necessarily led by the city, but supported by the city, which really shows the fortuitiveness and initiation of community members themselves. So, events that are occurring for Local Week, which is September 22nd to 28th, include the Albany Community Triathlon around Memorial Park on September 22nd, Taste of Albany the same day, which is supporting our local businesses. Let's Talk About It, which is at the Albany High School, as the lead organization being the Alameda County Library. The Best of Albany Awards Gala through our Chamber of Commerce. The Albany Senior Center Open House. The Friends of Albany Parks Cleanup. And finally, Block Movie Night. It came from Albany on the 28th. So, quite a bit to do during the week. Hopefully, folks can take advantage of some of those opportunities. We have sadly concluded our Concerts in the Park series. I hope that everybody had a chance to attend or at least see the photos posted around online and whatnot on how great these were for all of the members of our community that had the opportunity to join in the fantastic music performances that we've had through all of these bands. Appreciation to our Recreation and Community Services Department for putting these together and the meticulous attention to detail they had in each of the selection of bands. In our estimates, we counted about 500 folks at each of the events. So, really a great turnout, good weather for the most part, and more to come next year. Also hosted by our Recreation and Community Service Department, Family Fall into Fitness. These are free opportunities for the community to sample a number of our recreation programs and classes. A wide variety of opportunities for all members of the community. One or a couple still remaining through this weekend and next. So, definitely look at those opportunities, and you might find your new favorite hobby. For those needing a night out, Parents' Night Out is a popular event that we continue to host through our Recreation and Community Services Department. Again, this is an opportunity for parents to drop off their kids with their friends and others at our community center for the parents to have a night out. So, if that serves your needs, absolutely take advantage of this really fun opportunity. An update for you on the success of our heat pump rebate program. Summary so far, this, as the council may remember, this was initially established in March of 2022. So, it's been going for a little while now and had a great turnout. The program has supported thus far over 70 projects since inception. Also, since the rebates amounts were changed this February to enhance the equity impacts of the program, nearly one-third of the rebates have served for low or moderate-income households. Great job. A reminder and a plead for those that may be renters in our community to please take the opportunity to look at the Housing Advisory Commission that the city is looking to get up and running. The council has established this commission to help advise on matters related to housing, and especially in helping implement policy through our housing element. We are still seeking a tenant to serve on this commission. You can apply online. And please feel free to connect with us directly on any questions in that application process. Tomorrow, a Albany Candidate Forums will be hosted by the League of Women Voters. You can visit lwvbae.org to find out more. This will be an online forum, both for the Board of Education and for the Albany City Council. Coffee with a Cop is coming back for another community event. This is an opportunity to connect with our local police department officers and representatives. This will be held at the Community Center on October 2nd from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. And also a reminder of our upcoming Albany Fire Department Pancake Breakfast and Open House. That will be on October 12th from 8:00 a.m. to noon here in our fire department. And tickets are $8 for adults, $5 for children. And also a reminder that the proceeds don't benefit the fire department. They benefit an important foundation. They benefit an important foundation, the Lisa Ann Rush Burn Foundation. So appreciation to the department for continuing to serve the community in this way. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. If anyone attending would like to ask a question about or comment on the City Manager's Report, those online, please raise your hand. Sorry, please press the raise your hand button. If you're dialed in through phone, press star nine. Do we have anyone in the room who would like to comment on the City Manager's Report? Not seeing anyone in the room. Do we have anyone online? Not seeing any public comments. Any questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Tiedemann?
Thank you for the report, and just wanted to, again, note the first thing you talked about of the prompt response of our fire and police department and our sincere thanks to all of them for their quick effort. The hill catching on fire is one of my nightmare scenarios for things that could happen while I'm on council, so I very much appreciate their quick action to keep a situation from getting out of control.
I just wanted to also say thank you to city staff and our community for just being so involved and having so many different activities and Albany Local Week coming up. And I'm sure you also mentioned, wanted to mention how great the Solano Stroll was this past Sunday, or not this past Sunday, but the Sunday prior. So just wanted to say, put a shout out, it was really an amazing stroll and really, really appreciative of all of our city staff and everybody who like jumps in and makes all these wonderful things happen in our community, so bravo.
Yeah, I just want to second on the fire suppression that occurred on Albany Hill. To say it was at Madison is, I went and looked at it, of course. And to say it was at Madison maybe makes it sound easier to suppress than it was. It was about halfway between the end of Madison and Sarita Creek, and I was just astounded at how small the area was, given the dense vegetation that it started in, that the fire department was able to keep it to. It was really just amazing, so my gratitude as well.
I'll echo thanks for city staff and all that they did at Solano Stroll. It was a wonderful event. I will be making a petition next year to ride on top of the fire truck. The ladder, I believe the ladder fully extended, but I'll continue my conversations with the legal department and risk management on that one. With that, we'll move on from the City Manager's Report on to item six, Good of the City. On Good of the City, this is for attendees to provide council comments, information, and questions on an item that is not on the agenda. Please raise your hand now, online, or press star nine. For those in the room, please submit a comment card. By state law, known as the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda except under extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items raised may be referred to a future agenda or to staff for comment. City Clerk, how many online comments? One, okay. We'll have three minutes each, and we'll start in the room.
Good evening. I am Dr. Stephen Elbert. I have accused community developer Bond and Councilman Jordan of inventing and citing non-existent state law to avoid addressing why the city follows only the minimum state mandate of alerting those within 300 feet of proposed new construction. How and why did this occur? Last October, Director Bond wrote that existing state law precluded citywide alerts for new construction. I requested he document this assertion. For months, Director Bond refused to respond. I then submitted a formal request for records pursuant to which Director Bond forwarded 2002 Planning and Zoning Law, Volumes 1 and 2. Under notification procedures, subsection A4 details mailing public notices to those within 300 feet of new construction. However, directly below is subsection 5C, which reads, "In addition to the notice required by this section, a local agency may give notice of adhering in any other manner it deems necessary or desirable." No state laws prevent citywide alerts for new construction. Director Bond was not factual. Moving now to Councilman Jordan. In a March email, I suggest that the city could enact new ordinances which distinguish between small projects, such as minor additions to a private home for which 300 feet notification is appropriate, from large multi-story projects which merit wider notification. During the April 1st meeting, Councilman Jordan stated, quote, "What I read was that the city would open itself to legal exposure if we were to pursue different noticing distances on a project based on project size." Suspecting this citation of state law might have as much veracity as Director Bond's false assertion, on April 8th, I submitted a request for records to City Clerk for documentation of the state laws referenced by Councilman Jordan. Specifically, I asked, quote, "The precise location and text of the state laws which prevent the municipality from implementing a two-tier notification scheme distinguishing between small and large-scale construction projects." City Clerk Shu responded, "There is no responsive document to your request." Based on this response, I accused Councilman Jordan as the second city official to invent and cite non-existent state law that would avoid addressing through interfeet notification. Councilman Jordan did not contest that this document search was inadequate or incorrect. Accordingly, during the May 20 council meeting, I requested he provide the exact text and precise location of the state laws, which he asserted would create legal exposure for the city. It wasn't until the June 17th meeting that Councilman Jordan first offered any response, and he stated, quote, "The city attorney explained at the May 20 meeting why notification distances cannot vary based on the size of that project," citing state law. If anybody is interested, I encourage you to go watch her explanation. My wife, Celeste, will continue the presentation.
We reviewed the transcript of the city attorney's May 20 remarks. Councilman Jordan asserted that these remarks cite state law supporting his concern about some legal exposure if the city were to pursue different noticing distances based on project size. In her May 20 remarks, the city attorney defended the city's compliance with California Government Code 65091, just displayed, regarding mailing public hearing notices to those within 300 feet of new construction. Also cited was code 65853C3, which, quote, "Provides that cities address and where possible remove government constraints for a development of housing," unquote. This stakehold distinctly does not mention nor address different noticing distances of new construction based on project size. The city attorney's May 20 remarks do not address state law, which Councilman Jordan mentioned on April 1st. During the last council meeting, five months since April 1st, Councilman Jordan finally cited two California Government Codes, 6008 and 65853C3, which he asserted might be problematic if the city were to expand notification for new construction beyond the minimum state mandate. In her May 20 remarks, the city attorney cited only 6853C3, which does not address the issue of different public notice for small versus large-scale projects. Examining Code 65008, subsection 3D, does state, quote, "No city may impose different requirements, excuse me, requirements on residential development," unquote. But nowhere in this code is there any mention of varying distances for public notifications based on project size. Conceivably, this code could be construed to preclude a municipality from implementing different notification distances for proposed new, small, and large-scale construction. For five months, you did not respond to an accusation of citing non-existent state laws despite multiple public requests to produce the laws you've referenced. The city clerk has asked to, quote, "Fact-check Councilman Jordan," and the response was that no state law has supported his April 1st assertion. As noted, Councilman Jordan never contested that the city clerk's document search was inadequate or incorrect. So we asked Councilman Jordan, "Why did it take five months for you to produce the state laws you contend might cause legal concerns?" Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much. Hi, City Council. Thank you for being here late at night and taking your time. I sent this a couple times. I don't know if it was shared electronically, but here, but basically, my request is to ask the city to please start enforcing the anti-graffiti laws. And I'm sure there's many ways we could do it. My suggestion that why I came tonight is to ask the city, please, to post signs. Graffiti is illegal, and it will be fined, is one. Start actually imposing the fines, two. Post on these signs a hotline, so citizens who see it happening, we can start to take back the protection of our cities, that we know how to report it, and people start to realize maybe it's not such a good idea to graffiti because they will get reported and caught and hopefully stopped. I saw we have one park cleanup day. I don't know if it's the same thing I'm talking about. I can find out, but that's my next suggestion, if we can have a, let's activate the whole community and say, let's have a cleanup graffiti day. And then this month is the United Against Hate. I've seen some of our Albany United Against Hate signs up there. Thank you. And I would say graffiti, and especially like you see on my, this paper, if it's hopefully being passed around, hate speech is hate. And maybe we could add that to Albany Stands United Against Hate and hate speech is hate. And the last thing is if we can have a press release and announce in the press, right? Like, our city is doing something positive to clean up the hate, to clean up the graffiti and all the domino effect of crime and vandalism that graffiti invites, and we are, you know, empowering our citizens with hotlines, and our enforcement is going to be giving fines, and we're just, you know, we're just not that kind of city. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments, public comments inside the room? Not seeing any in the room. We'll move to online comments.
Hi, this is Peter Burdhardt. Good evening, City Council. I'm here to ask for an update on an issue I brought to the council at the last meeting regarding a critical review and update to the city's investment policy to explicitly remove certain industries, including but not limited to things like weapons manufacturers, fossil fuel providers, and so on. And I just wanted to find out what the status of that was, whether it was referred to the Finance Director, or, you know, if it's going to be agendized in this council, referred to a subcommittee, I don't know. I'd just like to better understand where it is in the process. Thanks, that's all I got.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing any other public comments. Let's see. In terms of graffiti, maybe I'll turn to City Manager. I know in the past, the city has been very responsive to handling graffiti that's been posted.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. As incidents are reported or observed, as we have several staff out and about, both through Public Works, other departments, and our police department, they actively manage any graffiti by painting over it immediately and prioritize anything that is, could be even, to any degree construed as hate speech. I've reiterated that across our departments, and it is an ongoing priority.
I know we're not supposed to get into deep discussion, but just a clarification, in terms of the city handles most of the city. However, when it comes to the Aloney Greenway and the BART tracks, is that the city's responsibility or is that something we contact BART about?
Thank you for the question. That is a shared responsibility, and usually because Albany staff are more accessible to the area, it is administered by Albany staff because we can respond more quickly. From time to time, BART personnel do monitor that area as well.
And is there a non-emergency line in which someone can report incidents of graffiti?
Yes, through our Public Works Department and also online through the Public Works Department Maintenance App. Maybe we could put that information up, City Clerk. If it is hate speech or potentially construed as hate speech, that should absolutely be referred to the police department.
Thank you, City Manager. In regards to investment policy, I'm going to be honest, I don't, I don't have my notes from our last meeting, but if we could get an update on that.
Happy to address that, and thank you for the public comment this evening. I do have email communication noted. When we do have updates, I will be sure to reach out directly. I can say with our Finance Director, we are inquiring with our investment third-party advisory group, investment firm. And as we have more information collected on that entire matter, we will be coming to the council for some policy direction and next steps.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the update.
May? Would it be fair to say if somebody perceives graffiti as hate speech, they could call the non-emergency police department line?
Sure. Discretion is entirely appreciated, and what may feel hate speech should be reported.
Thank you. And to the commenter's question regarding why it took me so long to provide all the references, I have a very long list of issues that I work on as a council member, and this one didn't come up to the top of the list until we had our August break, when I had enough time to work on it. I am, I have a day job, I have a wife I take care of, so it can take me a long time to do the research that needs to be done. Regarding the Public Records Act request, my presumption was that the city had no responsive documents because it's a matter of state law. It's not the city's documents. I don't know if that's the case or not, but maybe the city attorney could weigh in.
Yes, I'll give a brief response. Under the Public Records Act, if someone makes a request for documents, we're only required to produce documents that exist. That doesn't mean, in this case, as you had mentioned, that doesn't mean that those laws don't exist. It just means the city didn't have those laws printed to disclose to the requister. The laws do exist in their appropriate codes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, Consent Calendar. On the Consent Calendar, items on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the Consent Calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the City Council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member or member of the audience requests removal of an item for the Consent Calendar. Are there any items that council members would like to poll or discuss? Not seeing any items from council members. Are there any items members of the public would like to poll? City Clerk, do we have anyone online? Not seeing anyone online. I'll look to council members for a motion.
Move the consent.
Second.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malopez?
Yep.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item eight, Presentation, 8-1, Fiscal Year 2023/24, Fourth Quarter, Unaudited Year End Budget Review. City staff, can we, may we have your report, please?
Good evening. This chair is very high this evening. I'm just going to sit way up here and speak to you, and I got so excited, I tried to come up here during the consent calendar as well. So, welcome to Monday evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rayna Schwartz, your interim Finance Director, and I'm delighted to be here this evening to provide you kind of the first glimpse at what fiscal year 24 looks like. We are through the end of the year, but we have not yet completed our audit. And as all of you are probably well aware, adjustments can come up during the audit cycle, and so this is the first peak, but I would caution against assuming that it's going to stay the same, because it probably won't. So with that, if we could have the next slide, just to start with our overview to start with our overview, the bottom line overview is good news. The good news is that based on the expenditures and revenues that we have in our system to date, minus any audit adjustments, revenues came in above budget, which we weren't necessarily anticipating, and expenses came in just under budget. That's not unusual for this city, particularly when vacancies occur across the course of the year. We often come in a little bit under on expenses, and so that is what we saw. This leaves us, as I'll talk about a little bit more, showing a surplus of just over a million dollars of revenue over expenditures. So if we could have the next slide, please. So revenues did end the year overall, just on the revenue side, 1.7 million greater than budgeted. That is substantial and welcome. There are some highlights to that, and there are some caveats to that number that occur as a result of timing on certain revenue sources. So looking at the the revenue components, the property tax numbers came in essentially on target, right where we thought they would be. That's good news. Sales and use taxes did come in essentially, if we look at the 12-month figures, just about at budget, which is great. We had a delay in the timing coming into this fiscal year from the prior fiscal year. So we ended up with 13 months of sales tax revenue in fiscal year 24, because we had that one month that was delayed into that fiscal year. We've captured all of it. This will correct itself and be a 12-month figure going forward. But it does mean that when you look at the sales and use tax numbers for FY24, and it looks great, 300,000 plus in excess of budget, most of that is the result of the timing issue that we had coming out of FY23. And so when we come back to looking at FY25, we would expect that number to come down just on the natural, because we'll have just 12 months. But also, as we've spoken about before, we do see some slowing in sales tax revenues across the state, across the Bay Area, and certainly here, particularly for us, as will be an impact from the closure of Golden Gate Field. So you'll see a proportionally larger decline in sales tax revenues in FY25 because of the timing issue, but also just that general sort of softening of softening of those those revenue numbers. On the franchise and other taxes, in particular, we saw good revenue growth in those areas, well above budget. The three areas, as noted in the report, that did better than anticipated for the budget were utility user tax, business license tax, and property transfer tax. Those are all signs of a strong local economy. And how that will fare in FY25 really will depend on what the local economy does. And considering we have an election coming up, the economy could do all sorts of things. So we will know, I think, a lot more come December, January, about what that's going to look like for FY25. But if those revenues continue to be as strong as they have been, that may be an area where there could be consideration of budget adjustments for those revenues. That may be offset by the sales tax side. So caution with their with those as well. One of the the two other areas that I want to highlight, one is other revenues. That's a very general, broad category that has all sorts of items in it. Next slide, if you could, City Clerk. So we have an agreement with UC Berkeley that provides $400,000 in funding each year for 10 years starting in fiscal 24. That agreement was not adopted until after the budget was adopted, and so it wasn't included. So it appears to be a bonus, but it's a bonus that we built into FY25. So it's going to continue, but it is part of our base. That was, again, a timing issue. We also did a little bit better on investments, which is great. So we did have a little bit more investment income. We'll see again when we come out of the election, whether the economy is on an upswing or a downswing, and that will absolutely affect our our interest and other earnings. The final category, everybody's favorite category, transfers in. As a reminder, transfers in are situations where we are transferring revenue from typically a special revenue source, which is restricted for certain purposes, to the general fund. So we will pay an expense out of the general fund. This is very common in Public Works. And then reimburse the general fund from those special revenue funds for the appropriate proportion of those project expenses. And so we hadn't been managing transfers except once a year in the past, and that made it very difficult to determine what was happening with transfers. So we've now moved to a quarterly update of those. So as you go into FY25, you will see each quarter, a quarterly update of the transfers that we anticipate or that that have come to pass to reimburse expenditures in that quarter. I will say that in FY25, we did not adjust the transfer in revenue for the budget adoption. But there are a number of places where it appears in the past that the sort of overhead or general fund reimbursement expenses were estimated higher than they will be. And so going forward, certainly for FY26 and FY27, we'll need to rightsize that transfer in budget so that we're closer to the the pattern that we've seen. So we've been at least a million dollars under on these transfers in. I think some of that is an artifact of how it potentially was budgeted, and we can get closer to being more accurate on that level. But for those transfers that were reimbursing project costs or some of those others, we are on track with what was appropriate and making sure that we're balancing the use of those special revenue funds for typically operational purposes, balancing that against holding them and collecting them for capital purposes that may take several years in order to get those capitals. So we your Public Works Department does a great job of keeping track of those revenues and managing all of that. And so we work closely with them to make sure we understand where their bigger picture budget expectations are for those special revenues, and which of those are going to feed into our operating budget, and which of those are going to be held for the capital budget. So that's all on the revenue side, a really positive positive outcome for us. On the expense side, honestly, relatively close overall, just slightly under budget, which is still good news. All the departments were below budget, with the exception of two instances where there were expenses outside departmental control, all in the administrative side of the House. And those are things that happen that we just don't anticipate and can't really anticipate in advance. But in the grand scheme of things, we were by fund for the general fund, well below budgeted expenditures, so well within authority to manage those expenditures. Across the board, we were similarly two to two and a half percent below budget, both on salaries and benefits and on other expenses, so project expenses, other operating expenses. As I don't know if any of you filled up your car recently, but fuel prices are on the way back up. So that always is something that we watch very closely on our operating budget, because it is one of the more significant components after salaries. And so to the extent that inflation kicks up or energy prices kick up, that's definitely a something to watch as we go forward. So not nearly as much to talk about in terms of expenses, pretty across the board, very similar, coming in below budget for those for the bulk of the departments. So in summary, last slide, departments did work well to manage their expenses. Revenues are anticipated to end the year higher, significantly higher than we budgeted. Overall, our positive operating results, unaudited, not yet confirmed, please don't spend that money yet, is really about 3% of our our budget. And while it's a million is a million dollars is a lot of money, when you sort of think about it, it it is a relatively small percentage of our budget. So for context and thinking about, well, why are there these huge swings? And why do these numbers vary? You know, we were budgeting, we were anticipating potentially as much as a 3% deficit, if you look at the original budget that was adopted, which was adopted quite some time ago. All the time has passed, and now it looks like we might be about 3% to the positive, depending on any audit adjustments. So, you know, we constantly work to refine our estimating procedures, both on the revenue and on the expense side. But these are swings that are not unusual or particularly grand, even though the dollars sound big, because millions of dollars always sound like a lot of money. And it's just, I think, important to keep the context of the overall budget. And, you know, I mean, our expenses continue to grow, to evaluate what that million dollars in a potential surplus really means in the context of the overall budget. We are on track with our audit. The audit team is going to be onsite for the big portion of the audit, the first full week of October, so the week of October 7. So we're looking forward to that. The finance staff are doing a great job getting ready for that. We are well ahead of where we've been in terms of preparation for audits, which is also something that I'm really proud of the staff for for getting ahead of it. There are a million, I don't know, I think there's at least 100 items that the auditors just sent us this list of items. And they say, provide all these documents. And there are like 100 items. And it's not just one thing per item, it's multiple things. So I'm I'm feeling very positive about that. And we have a a good audit team coming this year. So that is really something that I think we'll we'll be able to close out close to the end of this calendar year, which is as it should be. We've been a little bit late the last several years, and looking forward to to being able to rein that in. And then just the reminder that as a result of that, there will be fluctuation in the numbers for sure. But the plan would be to hopefully have the audit in front of the City Council, the first meeting in January, which is later in January than you might imagine, because we don't usually have the first meeting. And with that, I would be delighted to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm looking to council for any questions.
First of all, thank you so much for everything that you're doing. I feel so much comfortable, so much more comfortable that you're here. One of the questions that I had was on the business licenses. I know that we had a hiccup happen as far as the mainstreaming and software and stuff on business licenses. Have we gotten all of that now wrapped up and under control?
I would not say entirely, but hugely. We are working with Avenue, the company that is handling our business licenses and gearing up for the 2025 renewals. We will have a portal that will work. We will have a portal that more closely matches our requirements. Avenue provides service to a lot of different jurisdictions. And we got a more sort of what I would call generic version the first time. And with a lot of effort from the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager and the Finance Manager and the Senior Accountant and all of those things, we now have a system that will be coming fully online for 2025 that is vastly improved. So I'm optimistic that it will be 100% better, maybe not 100% overall, but 100%, maybe even 150% better than it was this past year. I think we've also been able to really much better communicate to Avenue what we need and what's most important to us about that process for our community. So definitely a huge improvement over where we were when we kicked it off in, you know, say, maybe January through April of this year, when it was a bit of a mess. Thank you for that.
Okay. Hey. You got the culture of my brain. Thank you very much. And for all the work, both yourself and the Finance Manager. I watched the the FAC meeting, and I want to thank you for answering so many questions and having so much on the top of your head. It was very impressive, both of you. One question that came up, and I fully understand this one, you didn't have it on top of your top of your mind. And so I've asked it since, but I thought it'd be useful for people to hear it, which was that the city put $500,000 into an escrow account as a part of the eminent domain ceding early possession of the of the cross on Albany Hill. And I was just curious where that shows up in the in the financials of the city.
So that was an action that occurred in April of 2022. And at that time, the payment was made to the escrow account. It's been sitting in escrow, earning a little bit of interest ever since then. And it shows up in the expenses that were recorded and reported to City Council on April 29, 2022, in the council meeting of May 16, I believe. And so you can see it in the the, just like you see the register of all of the things each time, you see that there. In the annual comprehensive financial report in the ACFOR, you see it just as a part of your overall general governmental expenditures. It was not called out separately as an individual item. You did see general government be slightly above budget that year as well, similar kind of thing to a few things that happened this year, where it's like, didn't anticipate that. So but it was captured as an expense and has, you know, it came and went in FY22 and has just been sitting in escrow since.
Great. Thank you. All the way down to the dates. Much appreciated.
Not seeing any further council questions. I'll open it up for a public comment. Do we have any online comments? Not seeing any online comments. I'll bring it back to council for any discussion.
Just reiterate my colleagues' thanks for the presentation and the good news that it brought. Makes it, yeah, makes your job easier and a less stressful presentation for us. But much appreciated. It shows that we're in good health, and I think that's the best thing we could possibly hear.
I'll offer, I did catch in the FAC meeting that the Finance Department takes a conservative approach for for all my prattling on about surpluses being realized every year. I certainly far prefer that. So I don't want anybody to take my comments in that regard as a advocating for a different approach than the one you've taken. I'm grateful for it. Thank you both and everybody else in the Finance Department.
I'll echo the comments that were made before. I truly appreciate everything that the department is doing in terms of keeping us on track with our finances. In particular, I'm excited to hear that we'll be taking some improvements at the way that we look at potential future expenses and budgets as we move forward for our next biannual budget allocation. But in particular, I really want to thank staff But in particular, I really want to thank staff for being so flexible and responsive to the ever-changing, unexpected needs that our city is forced to face. And at the same time, keeping us on budget, right? Keeping us on budget, and that's a really wonderful thing. And I, I will say that the looming idea that we had a 3% deficit for, for COBIL future, I was very much excited and much prefer to get the, the surprise of it being a pleasant surprise that we actually have more funds. So, and so I would echo council member Jordan's statement that I prefer a conservative route where we plan for a deficit and work as hard as we can for making sure that we actually have a surplus. So with that, thank you, staff.
Naudited.
Naudited, that is true. I, I, I understand that, and, and there, there are unaudited and always unexpected things that can happen, so, yes.
Actually, I realize on the expense side, I'll, I'll take the opportunity, I think I've said it before, but it was, surprised me when I thought to look at it, maybe only a year ago, thinking about the other cities in the county. Has Albany had the smallest budget of the cities in the county? Even though we have twice the size of Piedmont and we're about 45% larger than Emeryville in terms of population, we do have the smallest budget by far. And so I'd just like to put that out there as testament to the efficiency of our city staff. On some call I was with, I was like, yeah, we're the most efficient and effective city in the county. And I provided facts to back that up, so it sort of became the motto in the, in that meeting. So thank you, staff.
Thank you for that. I, you know, I think I'll also really want to say, say thank you to both previous councils and this council in, in working to shore up and modernize our income streams. And so I think the one that I was pleasantly surprised to see was again, the UC Berkeley, the, the $400,000 contribution to our general fund and $200,000 to a new fire engine. And so I think those are really powerful and beneficial, but also recognizing that utility tax was updated. Many of our taxes, we've taken a chance to modernize, either bring it in compliance with what our neighboring communities are doing, but also to make sure that it's truly fair across income spectrums. So I really appreciate that. So I think every, every little thing we can do to both shore up the expenses side and the budget, and the income side is beneficial to our residents. And with that, we'll close item eight dash one. Thank you so much, staff, for the presentation. We have an early night, we might actually finish before 8:45. Let's see, so we have no items nine and 10 today and no new business. So we go on to item 12, council subcommittee reports, council member reports on appointed representation of Albany and other meetings and events. And I will look for volunteers who would like to start tonight. Hanson Romero.
Yes, so we had a great presentation with the Stop Waste Schools transforming our school cafeterias, also teaching them about the waste streams and updating, you know, we, we in Albany have been very fortunate to get some grants through the Stop Waste program through our schools, get a dishwasher. It's, it's just always, you know, and we've had the, the presentation last meeting, you know, the single food ordinance and everything. So things are really starting to happen, and more organizations are coming together, and it's just really awesome to see this happening in our schools. I used to be a school photographer for years and years, a long time ago, and still had recently, until a few years ago, still been onsite taking photos for underclassmen and stuff like that and going into the cafeterias, watching them through this whole process, because that's usually where we're set up to take photos. And it was, it was always interesting to me which schools really had already adopted, you know, organics and recycling and, you know, compo, you know, all of that. And which schools really were completely not adopting any of it. I mean, to the fact where I was seeing styrofoam in, in some schools still. So it's great to see this progress moving forward. So just think it's a great organization, and yeah, that's, that's about it.
Thank you for your updates. That's a member, Jordan.
Yeah, the one committee meeting of the committee that I'm on for Alameda County Transportation Commission was, was canceled, but I'm excited to give a little bit of a preview. I think I've mentioned before that the, the agency is setting up sort of its, its planning goals for the countywide transportation plan, which is its, I can remember, every few year spending plan. And I've been bringing up in the commission the need to consider sidewalks as part of the transportation infrastructure. And I want to thank Lisa Schneider, a resident of Albany, who's a former, longtime charter review community member. She noticed that a, my knowledge, that, because I tried to search for this before, the first peer-reviewed study of injuries on sidewalks. It was published in January, and it showed that nationwide, there's twice as many injuries that require medical attention in absolute numbers due to falls on sidewalks as there are due to collisions with motorists. And, and so I provided that to the commission, and the executive director said they're bringing back the draft planning goals in October, and sidewalks are included. So I will be excited to hand that off should the council in, in December choose to appoint the mayor. I will be excited to hand that off to whoever should be representing the city at that time.
Thank you for your updates. Vice Mayor Lopez.
Yeah, so the Alameda County mosquito abatement district meeting was canceled due to the California Better District Association Annual Conference for month of September. We do have our regrouping of the Giltrack Farm Advisory Committee. We're scheduled to have a meeting later this month, I believe the last week of September. In terms of other activity, as mentioned earlier by council member Hans Romero, participated in the Solano stroll, was quite a joyful experience going down the parade route with my chief of staff until he seen his mother in the crowd and started yelling, help me. When you were in a fire truck and you got a tiny human yelling, help me, help me, please, help me. Trust me, I'm sure the firefighters were wondering what's going on too. But no, overall, a great experience. Other things happened in between that will definitely result in maybe some interesting activity in, with the city later on that hopefully I could bring forward. And also found myself wandering into a tattoo shop for a new tattoo, which is not quite ready to be shown to the general public at this time. And then lastly, I won't admit that I was bored. I will say that I was supporting my daughter in her efforts of school spirit, and I attended the JV football game at Albany High. The football program had been revived this year, and so they have a JV football team. So I was able to go check them out, and it was a really nice scene, packed crowd, packed stands for, for our community, for our young people out there, and very different from my high school days when sometimes the stands were quite empty. So it's, it's very enjoyable to see that and see community just showing up and supporting our youth, and I hope to be able to see that on many other events, not just the sporting events, but I so look forward to all the things that come with being a high school father now. I'm sure Jen and I will probably see each other at many events.
Thank you for your updates. Council member Tiedemann.
Did we win? Did we win the game?
Of course we won, we're the Albany High Cougars. We're taking on Pinot Valley High School next, this week, and we're going to destroy them as well.
There we go. As a former member of the pep band for that, the, the football team sometimes gets defeated, but the pep band is undefeated, important to note. I attended a meeting of the ABA legislative committee. We heard some updates about the entirety of the session, which are too deep to go into right now, but we also took support or recommended support positions on two propositions that'll be on the November ballot, one of which was Prop 5, which is lowering the threshold for the passage of city bonds. And the other was Prop 4, which is a statewide climate adaptation bond that includes some significant investment for the bay and for sea level rise adaptation, which is very useful for the Bay Conservation District. We also had a meeting of the Ava Executive Committee where we discussed a couple of things, but the main one was about our resilience activities, including our Critical Municipal Facilities Program, which I believe Albany is on the docket for in one of the future rounds, as well as our efforts to create community resilience hubs, which we're sort of standing up right now and figuring out exactly how to do. I'll have more exciting news on Ava after this week.
Thank you, council member Tiedemann. I attended the Alameda County Mayor's Conference last week. Again, similar to council member Tiedemann, there was a presentation about Prop 4 and Prop 5, two pretty important propositions for the state, but in particular, I believe for our, our community of Albany. In addition, at that meeting, a very interesting company, Wisk Air and Nautical's presented their plan for autonomous taxi service in the Bay Area. And turns out, they were a firm that rolled out of Google, became their own firm, formed a partnership with Boeing. They are now completely owned by Boeing, but are completely independent of Boeing. And they are working towards FAA approval to fly autonomous vehicles that can hold four passengers. And their goal is to get the price of riding in one of their air taxis competitive with an Uber or a Lyft. And they see high possibilities of connecting local and regional airports to major job centers and, and other parts. In particular, they were really excited about the possibilities in San Francisco. San Francisco has over 50 helipads, almost none of which are used. So they see that as a huge market. They mentioned that, so one of the big questions that came up was autonomous vehicles, and they said one of their big advantages is when you're, once, once the vehicle gets up in the air, everything is way more predictable than it is if you're trying to drive a vehicle on a city street. So pretty much anything that can possibly happen, you can see it coming. So they are, they are much more enthusiastic about it. The urban planner in me was very nervous about the idea of air taxis everywhere, but they mentioned also that, you know, they're using this as the springboard to get investment, so long-range plans are potentially being able to provide EMS service and fire service. The vehicle can land in essentially anywhere a helicopter can land, but that is their long-term goal, is to go beyond just air taxis. Interesting. My wife is very excited because she keeps asking me, where are my flying cars? I was promised by 2020 that there'd be flying cars. And my wife wasn't the only person that has asked me that question, and I told her, it's almost here, so. There was no League of California Cities meeting last month. There is one this month I actually will not be able to attend. So council member Lopez, I'll reach out to you, see if you can attend. It is, I'm very sad to miss it. Guy Maserati will be there, and he'll be talking about statewide propositions and why the importance of the different propositions. So this is something that Guy Maserati had done two years ago, and I'm very sad to be missing it. But I believe actually others can attend, although you may have to pay a fee to attend if you want to hear Guy Maserati speak. Let's see, with that, any public comments or any other council comments? Public comments? Public comments? Wow, really are. Future agenda items, you can see attached to the agenda today, you can see future, oh, sorry, getting ahead of myself. Future agenda items, any future agenda items from council members? Not seeing any items from council members, any public comment? No public comment. Moving on to item 14, announcements of city meetings and events. If you see the attached agenda, you can see all the events that are coming up over the next few weeks. Really sad I will also be missing Albany Local Week, although my wife, as I mentioned before, will be participating in the Albany Triathlon. And with that, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you all for who took, thank you all who took part in today's meeting. If your loved one has experienced thoughts of suicide, mental health, or substance use crisis, or any other kind of emotional distress, call or text 988 to speak to a trained crisis specialist. With that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.